Good evening. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the front entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes speaking time. And at this time, our city clerk has a Zoom broadcasting announcement to make.
Thank you, Mayor. As of June 15, 2020, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. Therefore, tonight's meeting of January 26 is open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Additionally, pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor -- excuse me, Governor Newsom, tonight's meeting will also be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website and Channel 3. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID 838-6031-0158, and enter password number 462881. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for taking all precautions to prevent spreading COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. This time, I will call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for the City of Grand Terrace on Tuesday, January 26, 2021. And before I continue on with our meeting, I just want to make mention that tonight we will close in memory of four individuals of our community. Three of them are Grand Terrace Women's Club members. Grand Terrace Women's Club has been in existence since 1908, and its members have done so many things for our community over the years with their investments of time, talent, and treasure. And so tonight, from the Women's Club, we will close in memory of Mary Harold, Cecilia C. C. Perez, and Betty Daniel. And the fourth person that we will close in memory of tonight is a Grand Terrace resident and a local business owner, and his mother is a Grand Terrace Women's Club member. And that's Terrence or Terry McGuire. Some of you know him as LT. And so please keep all of these people in your memories and thoughts, and keep their families in your thoughts and prayers as well. So please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, may we have her call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Councilmember Robles.
President. Mayor Protem Hussey.
Here.
Mayor Mcnevo.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So to everything, there is a season, and tonight, we also have a special presentation that is for a member of our own community that we are very proud of. This is a presentation of a proclamation to California State Assembly Majority Leader Eloise Gomez Reyes. And Madam Majority Leader, you will have an opportunity to speak, but I want to read to you the proclamation that we are giving to you tonight. So, "City of Grand Terrace proclamation honoring Assembly Majority Leader Eloise Gomez Reyes, whereas on December 7, 2020, the Honorable Eloise Gomez Reyes was the first Latina and the fourth woman appointed as the Majority Leader in the California State Assembly. And whereas the Honorable Eloise Gomez Reyes was first elected in November 2016 to represent the 47th Assembly District, which includes the cities of Grand Terrace, Fontana, Rialto, Colton, San Bernardino, and the unincorporated areas of Muskoye and Bloomington. She won reelection in November 2020 with 69% of the vote. And whereas in her first two terms, the Honorable Eloise Gomez Reyes championed bills and issues that increase equity and inclusion in vulnerable communities throughout the state. And whereas the Honorable Eloise Gomez Reyes is the proud daughter of immigrants and has been a champion for her community throughout her career, the lack of access to quality legal services in her community led her to become the first Latina to open her own law firm in the Inland Empire in order to provide necessary representation to her community. Whereas the Honorable Eloise Gomez Reyes graduated from Colton High School and received her Associate of Arts degree from San Bernardino Valley College and received her Bachelor of Science degree at the University of Southern California. From there, she went on to earn her law degree from Loyola Law School. And whereas the Honorable Eloise Gomez Reyes has resided in the City of Grand Terrace for over 25 years and is an active community advocate, whereas the Honorable Eloise Gomez Reyes is honored to serve the constituents of the 47th Assembly District and is committed to working with her community to build a better quality of life for all residents of the Inland Empire. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Darcy Mcnevo, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow council members, do hereby honor the Honorable Eloise Gomez Reyes on her appointment to Assembly Majority Leader in the California State Assembly, and it's presented this 26th day of January 2021." What we have for you is a wonderful plaque that you can hang in your office or at your home, but we prefer that you have it in your office because we're very proud that you are a resident of Grand Terrace. But along with that, also comes a nice lapel pin. And this is something portable that you can have with you at all time. It is our city seal, and it is in the shape of a key, so you get the key to the city today in this honor. And lastly, to keep you safe, we have a mask with our city seal that you may wear as well. And so we were happy to honor you in this way, and I would like to give you some time to say a few words, if you would, Madam Majority Leader.
Thank you so, so very much. Good evening to you, Mayor Darcy Mcnevo, the council members, staff, and members of the public. I've got to tell you that I'm just so honored to accept this recognition from my city, from the City of Grand Terrace. I want to thank, of course, Speaker Rendon for having confidence in me and my team to be in this position as Majority Leader. And I also want to thank the residents of Grand Terrace and the residents of the 47th Assembly District, who every two years select me to represent them in the state legislature. It's been an honor to represent all of you, and I look forward to continuing to serve in my capacity now, Assembly Majority Leader. And I thank you so very much. Thank you so very much for this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being with us here through Zoom. I understand you are hard at work in our state's capital, and so we will make sure that you are sent this plaque, and it would be nice to have a picture of you holding it when you get it.
I'll have a picture of it in my office.
That'd be wonderful.
I will add it here to my city, all of the cities I represent. I'm honored to be able to list all of the recognitions of the cities, not recognitions of me, but the recognition of my cities.
Thank you very much.
So thank you so very much.
It's an honor, and I'm glad we have the opportunity to give you this presentation.
Thank you so much. I'm honored.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
All right, to the rest of our agenda, we have Item B, Reordering of Additions to or Removal of Items from the Agenda. Are there any items to?
There are none, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Allen.
I'd like to -- the check register.
Okay, I'm coming to the check register. I'm coming to the consent calendar next.
All right.
I just wondered if we needed to reorder or anything like that. So our consent calendar is Item C. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. And so I understand, Councilmember Allen, you would like the check register removed, which is item number four. I would like the November 19, 2020 Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting minutes removed. Are there any other requests to remove items? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the balance.
Motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Allen for Items 1, 2, 5, and 6, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Will you please call a vote, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Robles.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Yes.
And Mayor Mcnevo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, so I'll take these in order. The November 19, 2020 Park and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting minutes, and actually, that is an item that is sometimes includes minutes from all of our committees. And I notice in this one, it says Planning Commission Site and Architectural Review Board, none. So I wondered why there were not any meeting minutes for Planning Commission, and wanting to see if, you know, maybe they were just held back. And I went and checked the meeting calendar for the Planning Commission, and I noticed that there have been no Planning Commission meetings all through the month of October, November, December, and January. All of them have been canceled. In fact, last year, out of 25 scheduled Planning Commission meetings, 19 of them were canceled. And I'm curious to know, are we having an issue with a quorum? Are we having an issue with items to present to the Planning Commission? And I thought that I had understood that our Planning Commissioners had asked for information, education, and training, and thought that perhaps that was what was going to happen on times that there wasn't a Planning Commission meeting being held, or at least once a month. So if there's staff member that could address that issue, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. I'll try and address this particular issue. I think that part of our issue with the cancellation of some of the meetings is that we have had some delays in projects due to COVID-19. I think that also you referenced something about a quorum. I believe that while some of these were related to a quorum, the majority of them are most likely really -- we have two meetings a month, and I remember consistently maybe the second meeting being -- one of the two of the meetings being canceled. I do recall that we had set out about a year and a half ago to really provide educational training, and I just had that conversation with Mr. Weiss recently regarding some of these meetings that are being canceled. There's an opportunity for us to actually reengage in some of that training. But I would imagine that over the next six months, a significant number of projects will be coming forward to the Planning Commission, so there will be lots of activity.
Okay. I was just hoping we would be ready, since I understood that the Planning Commission members were wanting to have some education. So thank you for that explanation, and so I will move Item 3, or motion to move Item 3.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Robles. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Robles.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Yes.
Mayor Mcnevo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Allen, the check register, item number four.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Duffy, on packet page 24, check number 77770 to Honeywell, it says for 50% HVAC, and then on packet page 33, number 77807 is also to Honeywell. Is that the other half? Are we -- is that -- are we at 100% on that now? Peyton?
I believe so, but Miss Fortune's available to answer any questions that you might have.
Oh, that'd be great.
Assistant City Manager Fortune?
Oh.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmember Allen. You are correct. The HVAC system is completely paid off. It was operational on December 28, and we have submitted our request for reimbursement for 50% as offered by the county to pay for this.
Okay, thank you. On page 28, there's a -- to number 77790 is for Security Lines USA, it says for security pod and cameras for Barton Road. Yeah, I'm just -- yeah, I don't know what a security pod is.
Sir, a pod stands for a portable observation device.
Okay.
And so what Security Lines does, instead of just one camera, they actually put four cameras in a pod, and these cameras, as you've seen them on Barton Road, they can be moved from one place to another. They're not permanently affixed, let's say, to the corner of Mount Vernon and Barton Road. So for the 9,000, these were -- and I do need to verify that, but these were either upgrades or we changed out older cameras for new ones.
So I can jump in there, Miss Fortune would help you out with that.
Mr. Duffy?
So after the interchange project was completed, we added pods near the interchange. So you'll find one in front of Arco next to Lowbrow Inc. You'll find one actually on the entrance on Commerce Way in front of State of Brothers, and you'll find one on the other side of the roundabout on Grand Terrace Road. And so those cameras are all established as a part of our -- trying to keep our sort of net around the city on the entryways.
And so that was the installation cost?
No, that was the cost for the pods.
Okay.
And so that actually left you with about 10 cameras.
Okay.
Surrounding that particular area.
Okay, thank you. On -- Miss Fortune, on packet page 30, and it might be Mr. Duffy, I'm not sure, packet page 30, 77799, the Wi-Fi install at the parks?
Yes.
For $13,993?
Yes. So Onsite Computing is our IT company that we outsource our services, and I believe this is in conjunction with your question in relation to Spectrum. So Spectrum Enterprise, we paid them, again using COVID funds, $21,000, and Mr. Duffy can probably explain further. This is for them to actually run the line from the street all the way into the parks. And Onsite's services, they are going to configure, set up, prepare, install, and make Wi-Fi available in all the parks once Spectrum has actually brought the line into the parks.
So Spectrum provides us with internet service, and Onsite will be providing the Wi-Fi hotspot equipment to allow for people to connect.
Okay, so that the check that I was referencing, that's to Onsite for their services. Because she is -- Miss Fortune's correct, I was going to ask about the Spectrum charge for $21,000 for the other two parks, you know, and so we got...
So you'll have -- so Spectrum will be providing the live internet connection, and Onsite has provided the equipment to allow for the hotspots to occur. So you'll have, when this is all said and done, you will have two hotspots at Richard Rollins Park and also Veterans Freedom Park.
So does any of the parks now, right now, have a hotspot? Any of the four, or Havermin?
They do not. It's not active yet.
And on page 30, 77800 to Edison for $46,500, it says it's an emergency RE?
Which page is that?
Page 30?
Page 30, right. Number 77800.
To Vance Corporation?
Yes, sir. If you remember, we came back, Public Works came back to do an emergency purchase order so that we could do the road improvements in conjunction with Edison. These were the road improvements that were being done on Grand Terrace Road right next to the substation. This is the city's portion of that project.
Okay, thank you. On page 40, number 77839 to Tyler Technologies, it just says Tyler Technologies for $22,000. I'm not challenging it, I'm just curious.
Tyler Technologies is the company that actually runs our financial database.
Okay.
So this is our annual license fee to operate, to maintain all the data of our financial database. I will make sure that our description improves when we do these annual payments.
Thanks for those explanations. I'll move the check register, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Motion for the approval of the check register by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Please call a vote.
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Robles.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Yes.
Mayor Mcnevo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Restrictions contained in California law state that the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a brief response from staff to questions raised, and items may be agendized for a future meeting. Do we have requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we will move to -- well, we don't have any public hearings. That was Item E. Item F is unfinished business. We've covered all that up, so we will go to new business, which is update City of Grand Terrace Legislative Platform for Assembly Member Reyes and State Senator Leva to advance in California State Assembly and Senate. Mr. City Manager, Harold Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. And let's see, here we go. Okay, so the goal for tonight's meeting is to identify Grand Terrace's legislative priorities and utilize our existing representatives in the State Assembly and Senate to advocate for the City of Grand Terrace by advancing legislation, advocate on behalf of the city with state agencies, amend existing legislation, or recommend rule changes. So tonight's presentation will go over how the city manages its legislative priorities, establishing legislative priorities, and success stories. How the city manages its legislative priorities. The city identifies projects, determines the remedy, identifies the cost, resources that are needed, and then earmarks city resources, there's some available. Every legislative priority identified has a funding source or a requested action. So one of the things that we're doing is we're not just throwing things out. We've identified that this is what our priority is, and there is an agency or a legislation or something there that will allow us to try to achieve our overall goal. So in the packet, you'll see there's one that we have these legislative platform items that detail out things like what the project is, the cost, our estimated cost for the project, and if we've identified any city resources. We also talk about what our request is. We either want a letter of support, we propose legislation, we're mending existing legislation, or recommending a rule change. And then we identify the funding source, we talk about our existing legislation, and our potential partnerships. So about establishing legislative priority categories. So there's hazard mitigation, accessibility, transit line shelter, urban farming, traffic enforcement, school construction, recreation, internet connectivity, public safety. And I've got some of the success stories. Hazard mitigation. Also, we currently have, we've been advocating for the Mount Vernon slope, and so for the last couple of years, we have been trying to advocate through Cal OES and FEMA to get some funding for that particular project. Our first year, the category that we were shooting for, they had already earmarked the money for a particular location. This year, we've actually, FEMA has taken our application, I mean, sorry, OES has taken our application and moved it to FEMA. And so what they're doing is, they're going to give us money for to analyze the situation, planning document. And then based on that, they'll come back and say, okay, yes, we understand what the cost is, and now you're able to get some funding. So that's where we are right now with OES and FEMA. Accessibility, Senator President Reyes, in the 2019 legislative budget earmarked $12,500 for the city, I mean, sorry, $25,000 for the city to have accessibility in the playgrounds. So we're actually moving forward with having accessibility swing at the Richard Rollins Park. Transit line shelter, we worked very closely with OmniTrans, we ended up getting a smart shelter bus, but we're also continuing to move forward with that item. So there's urban farming, traffic enforcement, school construction, these are different categories. And there's recreation. Under the recreation component, Senator President Reyes, once again, earmarked $1.2 million for the Blue Mountain Trails. We're currently moving forward with that project. Internet connectivity, one of the questions that Councilmember Allen just recently asked was about internet connectivity in our parks, and we were able to utilize some of the COVID-19 money to actually start that process. We also have a project for public safety that we're working on. But in addition to our legislative advocacy, we are also a partner with League of California Cities. And so one of the things the council did in 2018 was the council passed a resolution to allow, if the League of California Cities had some legislation they wanted us to support, we staff had then write a draft letter, send it out to the entire council, and if the council didn't have any questions about it, the mayor was authorized to sign the letter and move it forward. If there were some questions, we would then bring it to the next council meeting, and the council would have that discussion. So now this is a point where we look at the discussions and additions to the legislative priorities. And so what I provided you was kind of a carryover from last year, and if there's anything else the council would like us to add, my recommendation would be that we take the information from the council, we reformat it and bring it back to the council as a consent item in the next City Council meeting. So without I'm available for any questions or discussion.
Thank you. Are there questions at this time before we get into our discussion? So we'll have questions, I'll hear from the public, and we'll come back and discuss. So I got Councilmember Wilson and then Councilmember Robles.
I have one question. Mr. City Manager, is it possible, under the hazard mitigation label, is it possible for us to apply for more than one project?
Yes, it is, sir. And one of the things that the council did, I believe it was in 2016, where the council approved a hazard mitigation plan. And so we submitted it to the state, so anything in that plan, we're able to apply for any sort of FEMA funding, so absolutely.
So would that include then storm drain?
If we made the case that that's a significant issue, absolutely.
I'd like to, you know, open that up if there's any discussion, Mayor, to the idea, because obviously, we, half the city, has a mitigable hazard in relation to the lack of storm drain that we have on the south side. And it would seem to me that it might be another target.
Okay, so we'll bring that back when we have our discussion on this item. Councilmember Robles, you had questions at this time?
Yeah, I was just wondering a few things. What is urban farming that we're talking about in this? School construction? It seems like we're taking a lot of the role of the school board with some of these items. I was just wondering about that. And just very quickly, transit line shelter, is that a new one? And internet connectivity, did we not just accomplish that? And that's all I have.
Yes. Okay, so let me try to take the urban farming item. So about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, the City Council approved an Ag to overlay, and a part of that whole concept was one acre ranchettes. And so one of the things I talked about at that point in time was the ability to, once you did that Ag to overlay, you have the ability to market that to to market that toward any sort of federal or state ag programs. And so that's what that particular item is regarding. And then also for school construction, one of the things that we've talked about in the past was the school district's desire to relocate Grand Terrace Elementary to, onto Michigan and Maine, and Michigan and Main Street in a property. And so one of the things that we talk about in the legislation is that there is a state construction fund for shovel-ready schools that are ready to move. And so one of the concepts for us is that there are studies that indicate that schools that are located near roads and freeways are not as healthy for our students. And so what we have been asking for in the legislative platform is to have them earmark for some of that money and give a preference for schools that are located near freeways to be able to jump the line and get access to those funds to move forward. And so that's what that particular one is. And then you're absolutely right, we have accomplished the internet connectivity at two of our parks, and we were fortunate enough to use COVID-19 money for that. But one of the things, we can also continue that advocacy for additional parks. All depends on what the council wants to do.
The transit line shelter?
I'm sorry, the transit line shelter, we did get one transit line shelter on Barton Road. One of the things that we identified in the legislative priorities originally was that we were trying to target places that where youth and seniors were having to ride the shelter. So one of the locations was going to be outside the senior center, and the other one was going to be up near the high school. And so those two are talking locations.
Okay, further questions at this time? Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Thank you. Jeffrey McConnell?
I had to take my glasses off, sorry. Jeffrey McConnell, Grand Terrace. As I have said before in the past, that I follow a lot of geopolitical, international geopolitical and socioeconomic news. And as you know, I'm very into much farming, and growing food, I should say. So I consider myself a three-year student of the University of YouTube. So I have a vast knowledge that I want to come and bring share with you on the urban farming thing that most of you are probably not aware of. Number one, a lot of things are happening in the United States or in the world these days, but you may not know about this, something that happens on a regular basis that affects the environment that mankind has nothing to do with, because mankind cannot control the sun. It goes through regular cycles. There's eleven-year highs and eleven-year lows when it comes to sunspots. And when there's no sunspots, then it affects the weather patterns on the planet, and other things, too. But there's additional to that, every four hundred years, there's a, it's called a solar minimum, maximum solar minimum. It happens every four hundred years. The last one happened in the sixteen hundreds, and guess what year it is today? So we're now going into a grand solar minimum, and this is easily verifiable. There's tons of studies on it from NASA and NOAA, N-O-A-A, National Oceanic Atmosphere Administration. And we are just now going into it, and maybe you don't know about the four-hundred-year floods in China that wiped out millions of agricultural land, and they are currently buying massive amounts of food all across the planet, including from the United States and other countries. They're just sucking it all up. Obviously, they have a large population. So you should really look into that, and I'll give you two YouTube sites that really talks a lot about it. It affects weather patterns, and it will affect all of us. One is called Ice H Farmer, which I follow regularly, and he also has a farm now. And the other one is called Adapt Twenty-Thirty, who talks a lot about documentation and articles, it's just not them talking. So when it comes to urban farming, the forty acres down where my farm is, which is for sale, by the way, I'm sure that's no secret anymore, because nobody wants to live next to trucks and dust. So urban farming, that is not urban farming, that is rural farming. Urban farming is like in urban areas or in-town residential areas. So if you go onto another YouTube site, has made over five hundred Youtubes on it, it has made a wealth based on this. His name is Curtis Stone, the Urban Farmer. He's traveled the world now. Three years ago, he was a keynote speaker at Grow Riverside Conference. So if you look at these things, you'll see that he started out growing food in people's backyards, renting their backyards, and selling it on a bicycle to the local restaurants. So it really is going to, a lot of things are coming to Grand Terrace in the world, and you really need to look into it rather than just passing it off as an area down there. Forty acres has no longer, no one's going to grow food down there because they don't, the truck dust is going to be impossible. So that's why I'm selling the farm.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Any other requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment, and we'll come back to council for discussion. And I know we'll probably go through each of these, but since Councilmember Wilson brought up the hazard area and the idea of storm drains, let's start there.
So Mayor, what I would do, I would go back and look at any legislation and any agencies that have grants, and I would also look at our hazard mitigation plan and try to, and we actually have some studies, too, in terms of what the Lewis Group was doing and some other options for us. And so I would bring that back in terms of format that as a standalone item for us to advocate on, and try to target particular agencies and funding that we would then put on our legislative platform.
I would think that that's a very good idea. What else would be in that hazard mitigation plan that we might look at as far as our advocacy at this time?
I don't, I'm sorry, Mayor.
So that will come back to us?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson, did you have further comments for that item?
Yes, Mayor. Actually, a little bit of thought pattern in relation to that south side situation. As we know, we are working on our roads, and we are successful in our road program, but there's a substantial amount of money that will have to be devoted to repavement. And when it comes to the storm drain, we know that we're talking about sizable pipes. And because of that, and because the, let's say, the water services, sewer services, and utility services that cross all of that, there's probably a fifty-fifty chance that the pavement will almost be, you know, no good between curb, from curb to curb. And so we might be able to incorporate the pavement, you know, the repavement in our request as part of the storm drain installation. And that should kind of help part of our overall program.
Okay, further discussion on this item?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Suffocate. I'm going to try to be as articulate as possible. On this hillside issue, as I mentioned before, it's such, there's a lot of stakeholders in that. And it's, to me, a cost that should not be borne just by us. And then we do have a general plan update that's due. And looking at Google Maps, one day, I was noticing there is a lot of huge lot sizes in this city, and the land just has dirt. And it's just too much for the homeowner to maintain. In a discussion with our local farmer, he says there's even folks that rent people's backyards to do urban farming, and that was an interesting concept. The other thing that we don't have in here is anything having to do with housing, like infill housing. I don't know if there's something that's been done in other jurisdictions that would be something that we could look at during our general plan. And I don't know what's at the state level, but I know there was a big move to push for that. And finally, one of the last things that I wonder, with COVID, situation making things a little more difficult face-to-face engagement and the destruction that has created for many of our legislators, including trying to impeach presidents that are no longer president, I wonder if we could not perhaps discuss at some future date engaging a lobbyist for one time to get some of this stuff kick-started for us. I think it'd be a good investment for us, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Further comments? Okay, Mr. City Manager, did you have more questions for us as far as legislative items to come back?
No, I was going to actually go back and look at the hazard mitigation plan and try to identify, give you a list of all the different items that are there, in addition to formatting a platform for storm drains.
Okay. And ability to work with other jurisdictions on some of these items as well?
Yes. And I think it's examining, maybe not in the legislative platform, but certainly looking at that infill housing is something that I see all the time. You look on our map, maps that we have, and you see homes in big spaces in the middle, and you think, well, gosh, if you could find some way to, you know, to subdivide lots and do things like that, if they're willing participants. But it certainly is something that, in terms of planning, it's a really good idea to actually consider that as part of your general plan.
I know that there's a, there's a house that, actually, there's two pads that were graded on, I guess it's Vista Grande at that point. And years ago, when I was on Planning Commission, the idea of building houses along there came to the Planning Commission. So there's one on the corner that was very much upgraded, and then there were going to be three other houses that were built, and then the economy turned, and so they sat for a long time. That is a really good example of taking vacant space and making houses, although I don't know that that's really what some people have in mind, because they're very large houses even when they're being built. But beyond that, is there an incentive that we give for dividing those lots and creating those houses? And is that something that we would be looking at in our general plan as an incentive to do infill lots, or to break down large areas of land and create subdivided lots?
We'll examine that, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Allen, and then Mayor Protem Hussey.
Are we still just talking about hazard mitigation, or are we all of them, because I'm wondering if this pool refurbishment for six point two million is still, needs to be one of our top, one of our legislative priorities? Except that that's not from general fund, though, is it? That's all grant money, it looks like, according to the staff report.
That was a grant application, yes. And that was not successful.
And, I'm sorry?
That was not successful.
So, but is this, do we want to keep it as a legislative priority? You know, that's my question. Is...
I would like to see that pool something that our community could use, and I think a lot of community members would like to see that pool in a condition that allows them to swim in it. I know we have the one at the high school, but that one sits there, and either fill it in or make it something else, or make it usable, as far as I'm concerned.
So, sir, one of the things that you should consider when you had your legislative platform is that you're basically laying out items for your assemblyperson and senator. And it's because you did that the last time, is that when Assemblyperson Reyes called and said, hey, how much do you need for that project? Because she knew that it was something that we had laid out in terms of accessibility swings, and so those things. So having, if a pool is part of your priorities, and something new comes about, then our assemblyperson and senator will see that as part of your platform and say, hey, here's something that you can gravitate to.
Is Prop sixty-eight money still available?
Yes, it is. They do competitive grants.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. Packet page one ninety-three. Mr. Duffy, the neighborhood-watching, ALPR cameras. I know this was, excuse me, a couple of years ago with this price, I'm sure the camera system went up, but are we still working with the sheriffs on this project?
We have not engaged the sheriff on the project. We do, we did meet with Assemblyperson Reyes about this particular item, and it certainly, if it stays on the priority of this, we can certainly reengage with the sheriff's department, but also move forward with the assemblyperson. I think the items that you requested in here were doable from her standpoint. It wasn't asking for new staff, asking for resources.
Yeah, because I was just wondering, because we talked about it a while back when we had the new construction down there in the roundabout and all the other avenues in and out of the city, we came up with anything else on it.
Well, so based on that plan, we did add new cameras to the system, but we haven't, you know, we don't have the other components. There was a funding component to help with neighborhood watch and some different stickers and things of that particular nature.
Thank you.
Any further items for discussion at this time? All right. Harry, no, I think council has a direction.
Yes.
I mean, council has a direction for staff.
So Mayor, what I'll do is I'll bring this back to the council at our next meeting, and I will identify, well, I won't put it on the consent calendar, because we have to have a little discussion about it, so we'll just do that.
Okay. So at this time, do you need a motion of direction, or will you just come back to us?
I can just come back.
Because on here is a recommendation to approve, but it sounds like we're going to make some changes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
That would be fine, if it's clear that the city manager is taking input from all the ideas presented, and bringing it back for council consideration, then no motion is necessary.
All right, very good. All right, so that was our one item at this time. So the next item would be request for future agenda items by council. We have none, so we'll move to city council communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
So I don't really have anything, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a report on the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District Meeting, six-thirty PM Thursday on January fourteenth. I did a kind of a quick synopsis rather than belabor the information. It mainly had to do with the BTAC Regional Water Management Plan for two thousand twenty-one. One thing that is, makes it easier to understand how the plan works and how the district works, is that the SBV MWD is a conservatorship. And we have resources, and their conservatorship determines how we are able to take advantage of those resources, but also to make sure that we preserve those resources. The advisory did approve the two thousand twenty-one plan. It reviewed a series of tables depicting water level management by import, drainage recovery, and et cetera. The goal for the San Bernardino Basin is a four hundred and thirty-five thousand acre feet of recharge. We do not have that kind of capacity. At this point, we'll take anything we can get to go to that goal, to bring the recharge up to a water level about anywhere from one hundred to two hundred feet below ground. Recharge, we intended to recharge as much imported water as possible. That figure at this point is about ten percent of our need. Participate in imported water for a year purchase programs, and recharge the San Bernardino and Western Municipal SAR diversions or recharge basins with a maximum ground level to water table distance of fifty feet in areas of historic high groundwater. They've got some very sophisticated tables and maps, as well as enhanced maps that have been from, that they've obtained from NASA and then, you know, colorized them to a point where you can determine where the real water depths are, and worked with consultants to do that. And one thing that we do know is that the ground level to water And one thing that we do know is that the ground level to water table distance of 50 feet in areas of historic high groundwater, the liquefaction risk is low, which is important because we have some areas that are naturally pretty close to the top, primarily because we have areas that have alluvial fans where the water runs down off the mountains through lots of different courses and then kind of goes underneath the fan and then runs out and is really high in the table in those areas. A subsidence risk is also very low, primarily because we are able to keep track of our recharge, and as you know, subsidence has been a problem in some areas of the country where they drain so much of the water out, particularly Texas, and all of a sudden they find themselves in a big old hole. And we don't have that problem, at least according to the data. The data is going to be shared with the basin technical advisory committee on a monthly basis. The background on it is that the Upper Santa Ana Integrated Regional Water Management Plan addresses the multiple water management goals, which would be avoiding extreme water level swings, which makes sense for us, reducing and eliminating impacts of Santa Ana River diversions, avoiding water levels shallower than 50 feet in the pressure zone for obvious reasons, to avoid liquefaction, and then to avoid impacts to contaminant plumes, because there are known contaminant plumes throughout the Inland Empire as well as around the periphery. And those contaminant plumes can be a real problem if we, for some reason, discharge some of the water in that direction, and it floats along that to a point where it aggravates the contaminant. Overlapping strategy, there's overlapping strategies to achieve the goals. All the retail purveyors have complied with the SBX 7-7 Reduction in Use Guidelines, which means 20%, we've been making our goals. Still not quite sure why we don't get a lower rate for that, but in the long run, we're doing what we're supposed to do. We're on schedule to be heard and approved by the applicable boards, and we continue, though, on a dry trend, and that specifically is a 21-year drought. The precipitation for year-to-date is extremely low. We're on a track at this point, unless we receive an awful lot of water in the next three months, to be looking at kind of, not a historic, but pretty low trend. Last year, we got lucky because we hit April and we got a deluge of water up until that timeframe and around that timeframe. But so far, this doesn't promise to be one of those years. The DWR allocation, like I said, is projected at 10% need unless the snow level increases up north. And if it does, then we'll get a prorata allowance to further recharge our basins. We are at a historic low level so far as our cumulative change in storage, our valuable, there was a valuable analysis of where we are in relation to the, say, the bottom of the tank, because it helps to know where you are. The fellow that did the illustration talked about your gas tank, and if you know that you are so close to full, but you don't know where the bottom is, it doesn't help you a lot to be able to engineer what you need to do to be able to make the system work. Lastly, with the new data, the relative volatility of the various storage basins throughout the entire San Bernardino Riverside Basin can be now analyzed, and there's a cooperative agreement between those areas so that information that we've accumulated can now be shared, and it's going to help us be able to coordinate the proper use. We have more storage, though, and this is one of those super bright spots. We actually have more storage than the entire state water project where we are. We just happen to be located in that zone. San Bernardino wells are not deep enough at this point to access about 50% of the storage that we can do, and that has to do with 77 wells. So if we have to go to a default situation and reach for the water, we can, but that also includes treating the water to make it more palatable and more usable. But we're in pretty decent shape. The forecasted storage for San Bernardino, if there was a sudden increase in the drought situation, we are still in an infinite condition so far as being with a small difference in that in one of our smaller storage areas. Our, let's say, workability is infinite so far as timeframe. The next meeting is going to be somewhere between April and June, and it'll include an update to the regional water plan for the advisory. And that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. It'll be interesting to see what this projected storm brings with respect to the water and what they can keep of it. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for missing the workshop. You know, I, my daughter was very sick with COVID, and I got an email saying, are you available this date? And then the next emails I got were kind of folded into Tuesday's meeting. And so being distracted like that, I didn't see, I didn't notice the different dates. And then my daughter, not only is her health compromised, and she got COVID-19, but she also got valley fever, which is a spore that, a fungus spore that goes into your lungs. So as you can tell, I was very grateful that she's doing well, and that day was a very, very rough day for me. Also, before I get into my report on the revenue taxation, I want to acknowledge the depths of the women that I served with in the Women's Club, Betty Daniel and Cesar Perez. And Betty Daniel was just such, I don't think the residents know how hard this woman worked. She lived on DeBerry, and I would come down, and her car was always going out the door and all the things that she would do on a district level and a city level for our citizens. When I first joined, I was like 50-ish, and these women were a good 10, 15 years older than me, and they're just remarkable how hard they could work selling hot dogs and providing all the Halloween hot things and the things they did for this community, and they'll be sorely missed. One note, Cesar Perez, you know, I'm one of those rare people of Mexican descent that doesn't have a cousin in every corner, and it was cool to find out that Cesar Perez's parents were from the same city in Jalisco, Mexico, that my paternal grandfather was, which was Tel Catichi, which was indigenous name that means a place of temples. And I just want to extend to the families my deepest condolences. And it really just nearly broke me when I got the news about Terry Maguire. You know, it was the same day that I was worried about my own child, and sadly, I just really feel your pain, and he was a great young man, and we really miss him. So on, we had a Zoom meeting on Revenue Taxation Committee that I belong to for the Cal Cities, League of Cities. As you know, that our city manager would come and tell us that the formula's for COVID relief from the federal level, we're really not helping a small city like us. And so this was going to be an adjustment where any future money coming that the League of Cities is taking the position, it should be at least on a per capita basis. And then there was a side discussion in the chat room that made its way into this proposed change. There was a gentleman from Catalina Island, and he says, well, it's great to give it just per capita, but 75% of our revenues are tourist taxes, and if we can't have any tourism, you know, per capita is not going to fulfill that. Then there was a chat room discussion going on about the county of Sacramento, where they got the COVID money and just gave it to the sheriff and didn't give corresponding amounts to public health. And there was a big uproar, and essentially, there was, and I had to look up the name of this, this is the world we live in. The gentleman is East Indian Dev Gill. So he got sexual harassment, racism, and bullying, and so he eventually just resigned. But the discussion was, this was supposed to be for COVID impacts. This wasn't supposed to be to backfill your budget. It wasn't supposed to be to maintenance of effort things. So the discussion was that when we're doing relief, it's to reimburse local governments for their losses. So I think we're headed into where the discussion needs to be. And maybe this minutes and also the general briefing from the policy committees can be put on my site, because it's too much to read here. But one of the things that the citizens should know is that the proposed budget does have $34 billion in reserves and a surplus. So with all the COVID issues that we're having, the state budget is essentially in pretty good shape. And there's a lot of bills already that are in the works that should, anybody be interested a lot on housing, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles, and hopefully your daughter has a full recovery. Mayor Pro Tem Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, being on Zoom and, and also, one of my questions was for a lieutenant last week when we had the homeless committee, and does San Bernardino County have anything? He sent me the information right away. Now, I know I'm not on any committee, but I was interested in it because one of the issues we have here is driving around and walking, you see the increase of homelessness around here, you know? So I just think it's just going to get worse before it gets better. So they had a meeting today, a Zoom meeting, and it's the SBCHP, San Bernardino County Homeless Partnership. Sorry. I guess they were established in 2007, and they had a 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness. I guess we're a little bit over that, so. And I was wondering, like, why didn't we, you know, step on as a city back in 2007? Well, one, the reason why, because we only had one homeless person, so I think that was a big issue for us. But it is becoming an issue, and so their partnership was formed to provide a more focused approach on the goal of ending homelessness within the county. The partnership consists of city governments, community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, educational institutions, nonprofit organizations, private industry, and federal and state and local government. And their mission is pretty much to curtail homeless, provide resources, and that's one of the biggest things, is that we can't force people to take it. I know Lieutenant was stating how long it takes to get a trust. And so a lot of chapels on there. It was a pretty interesting meeting. It got to one part, this young man named Levi Deathridge, he runs a family assistance program, TAY program, and his 20-minute program was really good, and he was talking about, well, how we keep on spending money on the adult homelessness. He's doing more programs with the youth to try to stop it, stop the cycle. So everything was going good on the meeting, and then all of a sudden, I lost contact. My internet went down, and I found out that my granddaughter unplugged a cord because she wanted to play, so. Anyway, but there's another meeting tomorrow, so I know I'm not on any committee, so I'm just, you know, interested in it and see what I can bring back for our city council. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. On January 20th, OmniTrans had a board workshop. One of the items that they're looking at is not only the reduction that was planned for financial reasons, but the subsequent reductions because of COVID with the student population staying at home for their classes and a number of workers not needing the bus. They are looking at ways of looking towards the future and what ridership will look like. They did have a ridership survey that they went through, and the top things that they thought were going to be important were the safety of riders, being the safety conditions on the bus and the safety of waiting at the bus stops, and that was one of the higher ones. But the two top had to do with automobiles being so convenient and automobiles taking people where they need to go, especially if people had multiple stops they needed to take. And so in light of that, they are really looking at, how do we become, how do we continue to be relevant as a transit agency? How do we work with surrounding agencies and other modes of transportation to really find a way to be relevant to our public that needs to be, that needs the bus? I mean, there is a need for a bus, but they need to reimagine themselves and how they fit. So the staff is charged to go off and look at what makes sense for the future. And that was it. Since Councilmember Robles brought up our workshop as a council, I will just say that I enjoyed our conversations, and I'm sorry to hear that Councilmember Robles, that you were not able to come, and I'm really, I know that you needed to be with your daughter, absolutely, and I hope that she has a full recovery. We will have those, the items that we discussed coming back to us, and so there's another chance for us to talk about them. And so that will be it for my communications. City manager communications is next. Mr. Duffy, do you have anything for us?
I do not, Mayor, but I do have one comment, that we will be having inroads, the county's homeless partnership program, the county's operating, as we'll be giving a presentation at our next city council meeting.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we do have closed session tonight, and so for those of you that will not be here, I will, I'll make the announcement after I talk about what our closed session is. We have one item on closed session agenda tonight, which is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, title City Manager. And so for those of you that will not be with us when we come back, please keep your thoughts and prayers for the family members of our former, well, our business owner resident Terrence or Terry Maguire and our lovely Women's Club members, Mary Harold, Cecilia, Cesar Perez, and Betty Daniel. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So at this time, we are in recess to closed session. With that, we will reconvene to open session. The council met in closed session for one item, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, title City Manager. We have no reportable actions, so at this time, we will adjourn, and reminding those of the residents who have recently passed and whose memory that we close, Terry, or excuse me, Terrence, Terry Maguire, Mary Harold, Cecilia, Cesar Perez, and Betty Daniel, please keep their family and friends in your thoughts and prayers. The next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to city clerk's office. The request will be processed in accordance with council procedure. So at this time, we are adjourned.